Welcome to our virtual Oshkosh City Council Candidates Forum, presented by the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County and Oshkosh Media. This forum has been recorded for viewing on Oshkosh Media Cable Channel 10 and on the Oshkosh Media channel on Roku, Amazon Fire TV, or Apple TV. All the forums will also be available at oshkoshmedia.org and on the Oshkosh Media YouTube channel and on Facebook at LWV Winnebago County. I'm Margie Davy, President of the League and tonight's moderator. The League of Women Voters seeks to inform citizens about major public policy issues and about candidates seeking office. We never support nor oppose any political party or candidate. For more information about the Women, the League of Women Voters, access our website at lvwwinnebago.org. To learn more about candidates appearing on your ballot, you can go to vote411.org. Six candidates are competing for three seats on the city council for a two-year term. There is one incumbent Jake Crowsey. Deb Allison Asby and Bob Peschel chose not to run for reelection. Challengers for the three seats are Michael Beardsley, Latiria Garrett, Courtney Hansen, Bill Miller, and Erin Wojciechowski. This virtual forum looks a little different, but it still gives you, the voter, an opportunity to get to know the candidates. Since we have no live audience, we ask for questions to be submitted in advance through email or phone. These questions may have been edited for brevity and clarity. Candidates received only the first question in advance. They have not seen any of the other questions. We also encouraged our panelists to provide questions of their own. Joining me on the panel tonight are Karen Schneider, publisher of Oshkosh Herald, and Nathaniel Shuda, editor at Oshkosh Northwestern. Candidates, our timekeeper will give you cues. Please heed the stop sign so that I don't have to cut you off. Thank you in advance for keeping your answers concise so that we may cover as many issues as possible. Remember, this is not a debate. You will each be given the same amount of time for the same question. At the conclusion of this forum, I will offer you each the opportunity to clarify or rebut something said earlier. And with that, we will begin with our opening statements. You now have two minutes to summarize your background, qualifications, and your motivation for seeking a seat on the council. Why should voters choose you over your opponents? And we will start alphabetically with Michael.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the League of Women Voters, for hosting, and the moderators. And it's great to see all the candidates signed as well. So I'll get right to it. I'm Michael Beardsley, and I have lived in Oshkosh for about nine years now. I moved here in 2012 to attend UW-Oshkosh, where I received my bachelor's degree in information systems. And I stayed here after graduation because I fell in love with Oshkosh. It's where I met my wife Megan, through where we purchased our first home, and it's where we've decided to lay down our roots. So it's important to me that Oshkosh is a city that is sustainable, equitable, and affordable for everyone. And what drives and inspires me to run is the potential and beauty I see in this city. And I want to give back to the community that has given so much to me. So here's some of the things I'll do if elected to the council. I'll bring solutions that allow for more affordable housing so people can begin to build equity and have a growing sense of pride in where they live. I'll bring forward solutions to provide greater access and affordability to quality childcare, so every three and four-year-old has the same opportunities. And I'll be proactive in putting people first so we can tackle pressing issues and also so we can plant the seed for stronger future generations. I'll be a champion for all things environmental sustainability and conservation while also looking at climate change as an economic opportunity for Oshkosh to be a leader in the future green economy in this region. As your next council member, I'll be someone that looks at what we can do instead of what we can't do. I'll be prepared to bring new ideas and work to bring real change where it's needed, but also work to preserve what is already working well. I love Oshkosh, and I want to be part of what makes it an even better place to live and work. So again, I'm Michael Beardsley, and I'm asking for your vote on April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Latiria, let's hear from you.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters as well for having me. I'm Latiria Garrett, and I'm asking for your vote during the spring election on April 6th. I am a proud 29-year resident of Oshkosh. Graduated from Oshkosh West High School. Go Wildcats! I have been married for 16 years to my husband Red. We are raising three boys, Armani, Jayavani, and Kaiavani, in this great community. And really, I'm running for council for a couple reasons. One, I want to increase representation on council that truly reflects what our city looks like. I truly deeply care about the community and want to be a part of its continued growth. I want Oshkosh to be a place that current residents are super proud to call home and others desire to. I'm a person of passion. I have a strong ability to listen, a strong willingness to learn, and I think those would definitely be a significant asset to both council and our residents at large. Not afraid to ask the tough questions. I'm not afraid to take risks. I think there is a lot to be gained in making mistakes. And so you have to be humble and have humility and know that you're not going to always get it right, but it's about your intention. I will focus to make sure that residents are not only just surviving, but they're thriving in this community. I want and desire to see an economically stable, inclusive, and equitable community of people truly collaborating and working together. And I think I would definitely be an aide to that, be a champion of that, and I'm just excited for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Latiria. We'll move on to Courtney.
All right. Hello. Thank you very much, the League of Women Voters, as well as Oshkosh Media for putting on this forum for us. I'd also like to thank voters for getting me and all of the candidates on this board this far in the race. I know the primaries aren't the biggest thing to most people, but it really does mean a lot to everyone to get us this far. My name is Courtney Hansen, and I'd like to be on the Oshkosh City Council because I truly love Oshkosh. I was born here, raised in the town of Algoma, graduated from UWO. I'm also a Wildcat. So I've been in the city my whole life. And I've been to the surrounding cities, but I believe that Oshkosh is something different. You can take 20 minutes to drive from one side to the other, but we're sprawling with different activities, and we're constantly growing. I believe that Oshkosh has so much potential. However, there are a lot of empty buildings that could be filled with businesses, and there are a lot of spaces that need to be a little cleaned up. By inviting me, voting me into council, we'd be focusing on bringing new economic growth and beautification to our city. It all starts with the basis, basic things. Cleaning up our streets, making things a little nicer. You're not going to bring new things in without making business want to come here, and that first starts with the first look. Oshkosh means a lot, and I also am running on the basis of getting younger people involved in voting and taking part of their local government. Many people think that people my age, 25 around there, don't really care, or honestly, they just don't. But also, it's because we feel so out of touch with our governments. I'd like to bridge that gap. I don't exactly know how I'm going to do that, but I know that talking to people and getting them involved, even just listening to their concerns about our city is the first price to start. Thank you very much. My name is Courtney Hansen.
Thank you, Courtney. Let's move on to Jake.
Hi, Oshkosh. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Jake Crowsey. I'm finishing up my second term as a council member, and currently the deputy mayor of Oshkosh, nominated and voted on by my fellow council members this past April. First off, I would like to send another big thank you to my supporters who voted for me in February. We had a strong field of candidates in the primary, and I feel blessed to be one of the individuals that has made it this far. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County, the Oshkosh Northwestern, the Oshkosh Herald, along with Oshkosh Media. I have been lucky to call Oshkosh home for the past 20 years. My wife Jennifer and I have three kids, Jackson 10, Jagger 8, and Joslyn 3. I have been employed at Oshkosh Defense as a UAW member for the past 17 years. I feel my life experiences define what everyday Oshkosh means to most people that live here. As for my qualifications, when I was first elected in 2017, I came in with the idea of having a fresh perspective, and I still feel like I have that fresh perspective of what Oshkosh truly wants in a council member, while gaining a lot of experience and knowledge along the way so far. I have served as a council liaison rep for the Long Range Finance Committee, Traffic Review, Sustainability Advisory Board, and the Landmarks Commission. As I mentioned earlier, I'm the current deputy mayor, gaining the trust and respect of my fellow council members, selected to serve in this role. My motivation to run again is pretty simple. I still feel a need every time a new idea or issue comes up to be involved and help share people's perspectives in our city, doing my part to make Oshkosh a better place to call home for all of us. Why am I the best candidate to pick out of this group of individuals? I don't know if I am. That's not up to me to decide. That's up to you, the people of Oshkosh. If you feel like you can continue trusting me and being your voice and can relate to me, then I'm your individual. For people looking for that person, I'm also here for you. I've always said that I'm here to listen first and learn, then make a decision. Some people talk a lot. I like to listen a lot first. After all, people's biggest desire in elected officials these days is someone that listens. I want to continue to listen, doing this job for Oshkosh. I'm asking for your support again in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. All right, Bill, you're up.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank all the candidates, the League, the moderators, everybody. The reason I feel I'm the best candidate for city council is my past experience on the council. Born and raised here, raised an amazing family here. All my kids and everybody. I've worked for some of the largest corporations in this country. I've worked for some of the smallest corporations. 30 years, or almost 30 years, being president of NTD. So I'm your candidate for fiscal responsibility, small government, and very much an open-door policy. Anybody can talk to me anytime, and I think most of you know that. Probably everybody in the city has my cell phone number, so I'm always available to everybody to solve your issues. Again, thank you all. Thank you to the voters who got us all here. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Bill. And Erin, last but not least.
Thank you so much. Thank you, first of all, to the League of Women Voters and Oshkosh Media. Thank you to everyone who is tuning in or will be tuning in once it's available to the public. My name is Erin Wojciechowski, and I'm running for the Oshkosh City Council because I think that right now we need leadership that is going to lead us through not only COVID, and you know, it's what's going to get us past it, but really, all the issues that are going to have a result of COVID, which is, you know, like someone said, fiscal responsibility, balancing our budget, making sure that we're addressing issues that haven't been addressed. So I live in Oshkosh. I'm recently, 2019, an alumni from UWO Oshkosh, where I got degrees in political science and economics. Right now, I work as an educator at Jefferson Elementary. It's one of my passions, working with kids and educating the next generation. And as a fellow young person, I'm excited to hopefully bring my perspectives to the city council, to bridge that divide, and make sure that all views, all experiences, all opinions are being represented and that people have that champion fighting for them. So in addition to that, I had the honor of serving on the Winnebago County Board from 2016 to 2020. And in that time, I served on the Information Systems Committee as chair and on the Legislative Affairs Committee as a member. And that was one of the committees that dealt with state issues that related to local government. So I'm really excited to bring that particular experience. I know how to balance a budget. I know how to write laws, resolutions. I know how to write ordinances, and that's going to be crucial as we enter into these uncertain times. I also ran for the State Senate, where I got to meet a lot of people in the rural parts of this community and in the city. So I'm bringing a lot of experience. I'm hoping to increase our diversity in the community and in the council as well. So once again, my name is Erin Wojciechowski, hoping for your vote. And once again, I'm so thankful to have earned the most votes in the primary, hoping to do the same in the general. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Erin. At this time, we're going to ask our panelists to begin the question period. We will give you each one minute to respond to each question. And I'll call on a panelist to ask the question. I'll listen, but feel free to ask for them to restate it later if you need to, because after all, there's six of you. That's a lot of answers. And then I will call on who's going to be chosen first to give it. So listen for your names, folks, and let's start with Karen.
Okay, and who's going first? Who's on second?
I don't know. It's on third. Let's begin with Latiria.
Okay, Latiria. So I'm going to start here. Since announcing your candidacy, what steps have you taken to prepare yourself for a smooth transition if you are elected to office?
A few things I've done is just really work with community members, right? So seeking feedback through my Facebook page, being out and about, and trying to just learn what people think are strengths and opportunities in our community, as well as definitely watching a lot of Oshkosh media from the Sustainability Plan Commission, current council meetings, just really trying to absorb and make sure I understand what's needed and what we're doing well that I can just continue to gain strengths from.
Thank you. Courtney, how would you respond to that question?
So the steps I've taken to get ready to possibly be within the council would be talking to a lot of the residents and also the business owners, getting a feel for what they want from Oshkosh and what we can do better versus what our strengths are as well. I believe that their voice is what matters most. We are just the representatives of that. So talking with a lot of people, getting a feel of the city even more so than I already have, and also reading the Northwestern, the Herald, keeping up on events within the city and seeing how those can also be improved.
Okay, thank you. Jake?
Thank you. That's a great question. First of all, I mean, I'm on the council already, so I'm ready to go on day one. I have built-in relationships with all the council members. I have support from nearly every single one of them. I consider them all friends, as well as work acquaintances. I have built-in relationships with city staff. I know how to interact with them and which ones to go to for which issues and the levels of responsibility in that capacity. I talk to people around the city. I have probably 30 or 35 people that I consider, I call up my kitchen cabinet, people that I bounce ideas off of around the city for different things. I have my people that have their own little wheelhouses, and they're the experts in their areas. If it's a business, if it's land use, if it's water bills or whatever, family issues, school issues. And I'm not going to not admit it. I follow the You Know It From Oshkosh One on Facebook, and you get a lot of good information and perspective on there too. So I talk to everybody. I listen to everybody. Everybody has a different perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, Bill?
Thank you. Sorry about that. Couldn't find my unmute button. But I stay in touch with the city management department heads, everybody. I talk to everybody probably weekly, so I have a real good feel. Obviously, my past history with the council allows me to keep up to speed. And I've got the budgets and capex stuff right here that I constantly look at all the time. So I'm raring to go. So thank you very much for that question.
Okay, Erin?
Thank you so much. So I think one of the advantages of serving on local government is, you know, knowing how it operates. And one thing you learn in local government is it's very nitty-gritty. Details matter. It's not just about big policy ideas. So something I'm ready to do is get ready, working on day one, to start passing the things that I want to see done, working with people in the community, working with fellow council members and the mayor to ensure that, you know, the city council is operating in an efficient and effective manner, that we're being transparent, that we're taking on new ideas and listening to people in the community. So those are what I'm going to bring on day one. But, you know, what I'm going to hope to improve on is talking to as many people in the community as possible, making sure that we're talking to business leaders who've been affected by COVID, families, you know, nonprofits, everyone we can, because really, we're all in this together, and we got to work together. So that's my goal going into this, but I'm ready to get ready to work on day one. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. So during this campaign, I've been making a lot of calls to voters. And really, the main thing I'm asking them, besides, you know, campaigning, hoping to win their vote, is the main question is trying to understand what their issues are and what's most important to them. Because at the end of the day, that's what I'm running for. I want to help the community and help them when elected. So being accessible and understanding is really what drives me and why I think I'd be great on the council. And just a quick example, I had some UWO students reach out to me, and I think they did a lot of other candidates as well, about having a desire to have citywide Wi-Fi implemented through the council. And I know they reached out to Lori, the mayor, and things like that. And I met with them, trying to understand what they're working on and what they want to see accomplished. And, you know, I'm not elected yet, so the best I could do is provide advice on who else they should reach out to, what other things they can do, what avenues they can take, and letting them know if I'm elected, what else I could do to help them in the future. So things like that are what I think are preparing me to really be ready on day one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for those answers. We'll take a new question from Nathaniel, please.
One thing I wanted to get into right away is the topic of the Lakeshore Community Park. Currently suggests, the plan for that suggests that there's three phases, costing about $10 million. And the Four Seasons building phase, the first phases, is underway. What, if you're elected, what would you do to work towards completing those two, phases two and three of that plan? And what are your thoughts on the plan in general?
Okay, thank you. Courtney, let's begin with you this time.
Well, I would say we would have to, or we should start by reaching out and asking for volunteer help. Whether that be having some kind of donation system for that to lower some of the cost. I believe that would be coming out of taxes if I'm not correct. But lowering costs, having the community involved and feeling like they're actually putting something into it to get some of those things done. You know, you can't do everything, like they can't do things construction-wise. But if you have community members helping plant things, just getting out there and helping lay some stuff down, they feel more connected to it. And that way, they can be helping get the process done and moving everything along themselves as well.
Okay, thank you. Latiria?
I would definitely agree with partnering with some of the neighborhood associations and finding out how they would be able to contribute from a volunteer standpoint. I also think we have to get things done, but we have to be patient from a recovery standpoint and just make sure that we're making good wholesome decisions so that we're not putting ourselves as a city in any further away from the direction that we're trying to get to economically and just recovering. And so I would say definitely reaching out and see what we can get done from a volunteer standpoint would be a great idea, and then just making great fiscal decisions where we need to.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Thank you. So I'll start off with, I'll be honest and transparent when I don't know specifics on an issue. So I may be repeating things that are already in place. But so what I would do, and what I would say in general, is I wish I would have made it a... Sorry, let me start over. I think it should have been a priority from day one when the Oshkosh Corp. building and the park was decided that the park would be prioritized at the same level as the Oshkosh Corp. So I think phase two and phase three should be prioritized to not have any further delays, things like that, to make sure that's completed in a timely manner because green space and parks are important to the community, and those are something I would prioritize. You know, they put Oshkosh Corp. up building first, which was a big success, but I would have liked to see the park done as well. So I'm happy with the progress, but I wish it would have been done by now. So and with that, I would just say we got to keep under consideration that the money that's going in, $10 million, doesn't balloon much past that. It's important, especially coming out of COVID, to be responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, Erin?
Thank you for that. You know, I'm in favor of this plan, and I know going forward that it's going to be a great investment. It is a great investment for the city. You know, along the lines of what everyone else says, we just need to make sure that this plan is not delayed because a lot of money is going into it. And I remember there being a lot of controversy when this originally was brought forward. But I'm hopeful that this is, in the long run, going to be a good benefit for our city. And I'm really excited for the green space. I know we're doing a lot of revitalization on the shorelines, and, you know, that is huge. We need to make sure that the environmental impact, you know, is not negative. We need to keep that green space, make sure that everyone can use it, make sure that we're actually keeping the promises of keeping that space clean, you know, while coexisting with the new headquarters that's going to be there and all the new traffic that's going to be over there. You know, I could see it presenting some future challenges that the city council will have to take on. And, you know, we'll address those when we get there. But my plan, you know, at least what I'm advocating for is continue to go forward, partner where we can. Hopefully, we can bring in some new vendors, some new businesses in the area, because this is one area where we can continue to develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bill, your thoughts?
Thank you very much. It's an awesome question, actually. I spent the last eight or nine years on the Parks Board, and that's one of my proudest things that we've done on the Parks Board. Ray Mauer and his team has done just an amazing job there. Oshkosh Corp. is a true partner there. It is going to be an amazing facility. The only reason the thing hasn't moved forward is strictly engineering and architectural. The new building looks gorgeous. They're already talking about increasing the size of it. The other problem is going to be that there's, I think there's only a little over $2 million there, and there's a $10 million budget there. So obviously, money's a priority. It's tough to come by. But if you look at the businesses and the development that's happened there and the fact that we've taken a situation where you're using pesticides and pay-to-play, you know, only people who pay could use the golf course now, this amazing... I mean, it truly is going to be a jewel for the community. It's just unbelievable. So we'll get there. This will just be one very amazing part. So...
Thank you, Bill. Okay, Jake?
Thank you for the question. The reason why we have it as three phases is because it is very expensive, like Bill alluded to. It's a $10 to $12 million project, and the longer the project takes, the more it's going to cost, obviously. But the first phase, we felt important, having the Four Seasons building there as a gathering place and stuff like that. I'd like to see phase two and three come along as quick as possible, but it's on the backs of Oshkosh residents and raising taxes and having them with that burden. The difference with Oshkosh Corp. blowing up so quick, that was private money. That was their own money being invested in their business, where we, as a city, probably can't afford that right now. We, as Bill alluded, we only have about $2 million set aside for that fund right now, and we need another $8 million. So it's not like we can just sew it together this year. So I'm excited to see it develop, but we just got to be patient and hope for more economic development along the way too and have it as another gateway to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're back to Karen for another question, please.
Thank you. So as you're aware, we ask the public to submit questions, and this is one that came in from the public. So we've seen many buildings torn down after years or decades of neglect, and it seems the only history that remains is on Main Street. How would you preserve the history of the city while improving infrastructure, commerce, and tourism?
Okay, and we will begin with you, Michael, this time.
Thank you. So yeah, this is a great question. I do think it's very important to preserve our history, especially, you know, the downtown area, Oregon Street area, where we see a lot of old buildings sitting empty. So one thing I would like to see, there's a handful of cities across the country that do this, where any old building that's torn down, when a new one's built up in the same spots, the facade has to be historically accurate. when a new one's built up in the same spots, uh, the facade has to be historically accurate, look the same to keep that historic feel. But at the same time, you're increasing efficiencies environmentally, you're, you're having greener building standards. But you're still presor, preserving that historic feel. So that's something I would like to see, um, taken into, taken into consideration here for historic buildings. And, yeah, leave it at that. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Leteria.
I don't know a ton about um, rebuilding, but I think um, there is something to be said about just driving down Main Street and the feel um, that it has, like when we have farmers markets and things like that. So I would look to figure out how uh, we can bring in new businesses, but maybe keep to Michael's point, what it looks like, right? The outside maybe. But I do think there needs to be an infusion of, of new because we want people to want to live here, want to shop downtown, be local, right? And so I think we have to figure out a way um, that they're not boarded up and closed down. But still, still just kind of be there is what I, what my thoughts would be. But I'd definitely like to get more information on that. Before I can make a really truly informed decision on that.
Thank you. Courtney.
Karen, could you please restate the question so I can make sure I cover everything quick?
Absolutely. So we've seen many buildings uh, torn down after, with neglect over the years and decades. How would you preserve the history of the city while improving infrastructure, commerce and tourism?
Okay, so I know that for houses, when something is either toward, torn down or rebuilt, we have to stay within guidelines of the city to keep the same facade and design of, that the area has. Specifically, I know in the downtown area that is a thing. Now, what I don't know is if that also includes larger buildings or business type buildings. The Miles Kimball Building, that's a beautiful building, but yes, it is in disrepair. It has not been used in quite a while. There was some way, if, I don't know if the city could push for like longer loans on businesses to give them on their feet to help restore things like they did with the Howard, to buildings like that or other things in the area. I think that would help a lot, bring a lot more into downtown and the other cir, like or other areas. I know that um, South Main Street is pretty, it's fallen apart. And if we could do something to help bring more business to that area, beautify it, that would be the right to go. We just need input and ways to make that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake.
Thank you. Um, I'm a former council liaison to the Landmarks Commission. I used to own a home on Washington Avenue that's in the historic district, so I know all about preservation. I'm a current member of the Wisconsin Historical Society. Um, one of my main priorities when I got in council was to always talk about um, preservation of downtown, of surrounding district areas that have history in Oshkosh, because without history, we don't know our, our past and we can still make the mistakes that people made up back then. Um, I'm for renovating um, buildings downtown to bring them up to current standards, current um, styles while preserving the, the integrity of the, the history. I pushed for a sixty day notice of any house being torn down in Oshkosh built before nineteen sixty to go into a review. While um, it was upsetting in my neighborhood, one of the houses got torn down that was built in the nineteen twenties and none of the neighbors even knew about it. So it's something that people would like to look at a little closer and to be able to go into there and maybe salvage some of the stuff and keep that history. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill.
Thank you. Um, that, another great question. Uh, a, as far as uh, Main Street, it's amazing. I think it gets better every day. Our biggest weapon to help rehabilitate these older buildings because it's, it's, it's not always economically feasible to spend that kind of money to renovate those buildings is, is TIF money. Um, and that's, that's some of our, some of our best uses down there. And I'm, I'm a big proponent of the TIF system. It, it is by far our most effective way of, of helping these developers and, and owners of these properties to do that thing. As far as driving um, uh, business and economic, uh, economic development and tourism and everything, between GoEDC, the Chamber and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, they do an amazing job of bringing people into this community. So I would support all three of those organizations one hundred percent as I have in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Erin.
Thank you. Um, you know, I think this, this can be a tough one. I think we need to find a balance between preserving, you know, historical buildings and the history of our city while also being comfortable with looking to the future and, you know, advancing a little bit in those regards. Bill mentioned it, you know, sometimes it's not economically feasible and that is just kind of the hard truth that we have to face sometimes. I remember when we were on the county board, we had to uh, replace the windows in the courthouse and that's a historical building. And the price was astronomical because of all the, you know, very tight procedures that we had to follow, you know, who we could do it through. You know, you get through a lot of the nitty gritty once you start dealing with historical buildings. So, you know, they are tough conversations that we have to have sometimes. Obviously, I think we should preserve what we can, but I think we need to be comfortable with, you know, sometimes moving on from that and doing what's best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Nathaniel, back to you for a new question.
Um, one of the things that the council has talked about in the past, um, and, and certainly it sounds like we'll be, uh, could be discussing it in the future is uh, the aspect of uh, special assessments and how the, how the city goes about supplementing the cost of, of public works, uh, road construction projects and that type of thing. How would you, if elected to council, how would you approach this topic of special assessments? And what sort of options are out there that you would, um, that you would uh, look into?
Okay, let's start with Courtney.
So, um, I know that a big thing is sidewalks for a lot of community members, having to pay for the, the replacements of panels, um, and also the road construction. I know that the city pays for that part of it. But I'm gonna focus more on, let's just use the sidewalks in general. I know that the city gives out loans for those and you can pay them back periodically. You don't have to do it all at once. It has to be paid for, unfortunately. It sucks that um, residents have to pay for it themselves. But it's just something that has to be done. It has to kept, be kept up. Obviously, we could look into working more and helping subsidize those and keeping things at a lower cost. Maybe going with more of a bundle through the companies somehow, but um, I'd have to look more into it to really give you a definite answer. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Bill.
Thank you very much. Uh, uh, I'm a little familiar with this, uh, wi, with this uh, question. Given my past history on the council and, and Jake certainly is as well. It, it's a challenge. The current system is very taxing on, on elderly people uh, who are retired. I shouldn't say just elderly, anybody who's retired. Somebody comes through, or not somebody, our city comes through and, and redoes, uh, redoes the roads, the sidewalks. Then they've got a enormous uh, special assessment there that can sometimes equal the value of the home. Uh, and it's tragic. The, the, I think, uh, I think it's a wheel tax and a couple other things have been proposed and uh, it, it's, it's divided the, the residents against the businesses. So it's, it's a, it's a touchy, tricky scenario. Um, and, and it's just, it, coming up with an equitable solution for everybody, meaning businesses and residents is gonna be a big challenge. Uh, on the other hand, you don't want to give uh, city government a free hand once uh, they've gone away from the special assessment process to constantly expand what they're spending uh, without some type of governance and oversight. So, uh, oh, sorry, I ran out of time. Sorry about that.
Let's move on to Michael.
You said Michael?
I did.
It broke up a little bit. Okay, thanks. Um, so, so yeah, I agree, this, this is a big challenge. But I, I don't support the current special assessment process. Um, I, I do think it puts too much hardship on residents. That's essentially out of their control. Um, I do know there's a repayment plan, but I'm, I'm not a big fan of that either because that is ten to fifteen years at three to five percent, which, you know, for reasons the city can't provide much lower rate than that. So, so I think instead of going that route, I would support a, a previously proposed plan, um, which is the utility fee each month. At, I think it was four, four dollars, four dollars fifty cents, something like that, where you have a set fee each month on top of your utility bill. Um, I think that would be the most equitable solution, um, that I've seen proposed. Um, and in regard to a wheel tax, I would be against that because there is already questions around the, the legality of if that money can be used for sidewalks as well. So I don't want to go that route. Um, but I will note quick, um, before my time's up, that I would be in favor in keeping the special assessment for businesses. I know that there um, has been some pushback from the business community that they like the process. So I would be okay with keeping it for businesses if that is what it takes to relieve the burden from residential properties. So I would be okay with a hybrid approach there. So thank you.
Thank you. Erin.
Thank you for this question. And I know in the last, we had this question in the last uh, forum and, you know, like I said before, this is one of those nitty gritty discussions that we really need to look at all the details, all our options, see what neighboring communities have done. Um, and I'd like to do that before making decisions. But, you know, I think right now where I'm leaning is I do support some type of hybrid model. I would like to see u, utility tax because right now the burden on, you know, sometimes single people, small families, people are struggling right now. And the last thing they need is some large bill, um, you know, because we have a special assessment. You know, I think we need to see some hybrid model that kind of lowers the burden on people, spreading it out, uh, makes it easier because this is a citywide issue. We're all in this. But I do like the idea of, you know, businesses, businesses sticking with that special assessment or even doing a hybrid model for residents. So people, you know, doing the utility bill and a sp, a smaller special assessment on top of that. So, you know, it's still those communities who are paying for those fees in their specific areas. I'd like to see something done on this issue for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Leteria.
I um, definitely think there is opportunity with the uh, current process. I think, um, like a lot of the other candidates have said, you know, it's about leaning into other communities that are seeing success and really working hard to come up with a more equitable solution, um, that benefits everyone and not just businesses or not just residents. I think um, the burden shouldn't fall on our residents. That's just my, my opinion. I think we do have to have these things, road repairs and improvements, uh, but we have to find a better way uh, to cover the cost of that. I do also, I feel like the utility fund um, would be a great idea as well. Just to kind of help out with that and, and it not being that, that sticker shock. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Jake.
Thank you. Um, when I first got on council four years ago, this was one of the big um, election issues along with the rental inspection four years ago and it hasn't went away. We've taken it a couple times, um, swung and missed, voted a, voted a resolution down, ordinance down one time. Um, I'm in support of a thirty to fifty dollar a year road fee, utility tax, however you want to call it. It can be devastating to families. Say you have a eighty to a hundred thousand dollar home. You live on a corner, you're gonna be assessed ten to twenty thousand dollars. And depending on your, um, your financial situation, if you've chosen to live in that community or, um, that's the community you can afford to live in, it might be the difference of helping your child go to college or buying a car you need. So I'm obviously for a, a utility tax or whatever you want to call it, um, just lessen the burden on the what ifs in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Karen, back to you.
All right, I have a short one. So, uh, which is a great follow up to the wheel assessment. So would you support a half percent local sales tax and why or why not?
Okay, great question. Let's start with Erin this time.
Put me on the spot a little bit. I would have to look into, obviously, you know, the county doesn't have one and it, the discussion, they've never came up. Because the way we were operating worked. I think the way the city's operating right now is we don't need it. But given COVID and, you know, once the budget session comes around, you know, I'd really have to wait to see what our budget's at, where we're at financially to say if I would support doing that. Um, that's just kind of the truth. But, you know, if it looks like we do need to do that, you know, I would take the steps and be in support of that. Thank you.
Okay, Bill.
Surprisingly, um, to most of my friends, I would support a half percent sales tax. We have, we have a tremendous tourism and, and visitor business here, EAA, the concerts, everything. Um, we're not taking advantage of that. Appleton has roughly, we're, we're roughly the same size as Appleton proper. Uh, they have double the tax revenues that Oshkosh has and, and half as much debt as we have. We need to resolve those issues. And I think a half percent sales tax uh, could certainly be justified uh, for Oshkosh. Uh, I, I, I would support a half percent sales tax.
Okay, thank you. Jake, what are your thoughts?
Thank you. Um, that's a great question. I don't know if I can answer it. Um, cause like, what would it be used for? Why, why not? As the largest city in the county, the county would get a portion of that half percent sales tax as well. So we'd be helping out the county with their issues too, when we would be asking the citizens of Oshkosh to pay for that um, project. So I can't give a clear answer for it. It just depends on what the project would be and the reason why.
Okay, thank you. Courtney.
I agree with everything else that has been said. I agree with Bill that it would be a good idea. It would help us put a little extra money in the um, budget. I also agree that I would have to see what it would be used for and how much the county would take and where things would be going. Because of all the tours in our area, EAA, all the concerts, everything else that we bring in, sales tax might not be a bad idea and it would really help us out. Um, like Bill also said, we have a lot more debt. That needs to be, that needs to be taken down somehow. And unfortunately, we don't, you know, no one likes extra taxes, but if it's gonna help us out in the long run, I think it would be a good idea. Overall, I need to know more about it before I say anything further on that answer. Thank you.
Okay, Leteria.
I'm pretty much um, with the majority of, you know, I need a little bit more transparency as to what its uses would be. I feel like we have in the past been an event city and I know, um, everybody's, you know, really wanting and desiring to get back to that, uh, because of what that does to our economy. I don't know that at this time, um, creating an additional tax would be in our benefit if we're really wanting people to come back and also bring new people into um, our community from a tourism standpoint. So I think knowing more would help me make uh, that decision. But I could see benefits um, from both sides of it.
Okay, thank you. And Michael.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so this is a, this is gonna be a complicated one. So I will preface this in saying that I, I do like that this tool potentially would be available for cities to implement and this would have to get passed by referendum. So, so this wouldn't be fully up to the council. You know, this would be up to the public. And, um, but with saying that, uh, I'm gonna say no, right now. I don't think it's the right time coming out of a pandemic to raise taxes, especially a sales tax specifically. Because uh, I think that disproportionately puts burden on middle to low income people in the community. So I know all the, all the pros, we have a lot of visitors coming in, we need to raise revenue out, coming out of a pandemic. But I think it's something that, um, we should sit on and address a couple years on the line when, when things are a little more stable economically. I don't want to do this coming out of a pandemic. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nathaniel, back to you for a question, please.
Uh, one of the things that uh, uh, some of the candidates mentioned here for the, the previous question, uh, was, was talking about bringing people to Oshkosh. So I, the, this question kind of addresses that to some extent. Um, if you're elected to council, how would you encourage people to move to Oshkosh? And once you're, once they're here, how would you encourage them to stay here?
Okay, let's start with, oh golly, let's start with Okay, let's start with, oh golly, let's start with Aaron this time.
Thank you for that question. So I love this question because as a young person, you know, one of the things that I hear a lot from, you know, people around my age is that you know, once they're graduated, they can't wait to get out of here or move away. And it's rarely that I'm hearing people say, I can't wait to, you know, move into the city or start my life here. And you know, I think one of the big issues we have to tackle has to do with diversity. You know, we don't see a lot of diversity in this area, you know, in our government. I think that's a serious question that we have to have. You know, we're very close to Appleton, even Milwaukee, and those are much more diverse places. I think that's because those are areas that promote diversity and inclusion. You know, we want a diverse area. We want people of all backgrounds, you know, of all different experiences and qualifications working here, starting their lives here. And I think that starts with having people in those positions of power, you know, saying that, you know, I do see you and we do want you here. And you know, one of the biggest examples I can give is when I was on the county board and you know, I brought forward a resolution just advocating for, you know, the ban of conversion therapy. And a lot of people didn't know what that was, but I had a lot of people, a lot of transgender people in the community reach out and say, thank you. I see, you know, I feel seen. I'm thankful that people are actually talking about this. So having conversations like that are important. We also need to, you know, modernize our city more and more, you know, push for things that young people and people of all ages want to come to.
Aaron, I'm gonna have to stop you there. Thank you. Okay, let's go to Jake.
Thank you. The way to bring more opportunity to Oshkosh is to have a more inclusive community. That's plain and simple. The more inclusive you are to people that don't look like you, that don't believe what you believe, different roads of life, that's what makes a community great. I look at Madison. There's so many different kind of people, so many backgrounds, so many perspectives that it just shows how great of a city Madison is. And one day I hope that we can have that array of people. UW Oshkosh is a great opportunity. People come here from all over the country to go to school here. And as Aaron said, a lot of people just want to leave as quick as they can. But we need to attract those younger people to want to stay, to have a cool host right off of Main Street, develop those areas, help the housing stock. We have affordable rent. People need to take advantage of that in Oshkosh. More diverse events for people to enjoy. One of the things me and my family like to do, we like to experience different people's cultures, you know, learn. The more you learn, the more you understand people, the more you can relate to them. So that's how I feel that we can grow.
Thank you. Latiria.
Thank you. I think it, it's been said quite a few times already, but I think just being welcoming is the way to do that. So to someone else's point, I think it was Jake, you know, we have a ton of diverse students at the university. And when they step off the university grounds, how do we engage them? How do we make them so welcome that they want to stay after school? I think just showing up, our neighborhood associations and things like that, I think are great, our diversity affairs committees. You know, diversity, equity and inclusion, but really getting to some action and not just the planning and strategizing stage so that people know who we are and who we want to be. And that way they feel like they're okay to come here. They want to live here. Like I mentioned earlier, I want all of us to be proud that we live here so much that it's, you know, automatic that others looking in are like, hey, you heard about Oshkosh? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Michael.
Thank you. And I'll start with, I was one of those people that came here because of UW Oshkosh and I ended up staying. But I know a lot of people leave and that's, that's a big issue. So I'll echo what a lot of people have said about promoting diversity and inclusiveness. And if you look at the cities, people are moving to right after Leale Oshkosh. Generally, there's more, either more economic opportunities or they're more walkable cities with more green spaces, even more entertainment opportunities now. I guess footnote with that is entertainment in Oshkosh has been going really strong before the pandemic. So if we just get that back up to where it was, that's even a huge step. And in general, new developments like the Sodas District, Lake Shore Park are huge steps in the right direction. I think, I think the council and the city are already on the right track of kind of solving this issue, I would say. But I guess one thing I'll add real quick, that's a concrete solution we could do is, is make homeownership more affordable. And I don't mean rentals, rent prices, I mean actually owning a home. Because people that own their home are more tied to their community financially and culturally and emotionally. And I think that's one specific way we can make people stay and actually want to stay. So thank you.
Thank you. Courtney.
All right. I would love to piggyback off of what everyone else has said. Inclusivity of diversity, keeping people from UWO. I believe that Oshkosh, we as a city need to showcase ourselves to the college students to be recognized by them. Right now, they're in the campus bubble. When they go out, they go to Target, they go to buy things and they go right back to the campus bubble. I feel like if the city of Oshkosh were able to somehow integrate, whether that be through beautification, volunteer services and opportunities to get people out cleaning up our community, and this is tying it back to what I said earlier, making this place look like a nice area to live, not garbage, you know, there's garbage on the streets, you see it everywhere. But also the volunteer, getting people themselves involved in it and getting the residents and the college students to work together on things like that, I feel like that would help a lot. It would keep people to stay, it would put their investments into the city and it would just help Oshkosh overall. And all that UW already has a cleanup Oshkosh program, but including the city, people of the city and UW students, that would take us a long way.
Thank you. And Bill.
Thank you. This is, this is probably the easiest question for me to answer. Just being a lifelong resident of Oshkosh and growing up here being raised. Oshkosh, when I was younger, was a pretty dismal factory town. And not knocking the manufacturing business or anything, but I've seen this amazing community progress over the last fifty years. Look at the Riverwalk that was never there. Look at, even though the arena's struggling right now, look, look at all the amazing things that are going on here. Oshkosh Corp's new headquarters, Amcor, all these wonderful companies. These high paying jobs, we will, we will succeed in recruiting a diverse group of people. The county has, has a, has a committee of, you know, diversity and inclusion, the university does, now the city does. So I mean, we are making tremendous strides in this area for retaining people here. And the best thing about this, everybody is on the same page for this goal. Everybody wants this to happen, the businesses, the residents, the community, the government. So this will happen and, and, and it's going to be an amazing thing and it already is. So, thank you.
Okay, let's go to Karen for a question, please.
Okay, so part of attracting folks is curb appeal. So what would you do to tackle the issue of blatant vacant land in the city of Oshkosh?
And let's start this time with Michael.
Thank you. Much like Bill's last question, this is probably the easiest one for me. I'm a big proponent of taking this vacant land, you know, specifically if this is under the city's control already. And converting this into parks or green spaces. And for situations where maybe it's like a vacant home or things like that where the city takes that over, adding or moving that house into a community land trust to then be able to resell that more affordably. And real quick, essentially, a community land trust is the city owns the land, but sells the house on the land, making the purchase price lower. So that's another way that I think we could, again, make homeownership more affordable, which you would hope increased curb appeal. Or, yeah, or there'd be parks instead of the vacant land. So those are the routes I would take. Thank you.
Thank you. Latiria.
If I'm being honest, I don't know much about feeling any type of vacant land. However, if that was something that was proposed to council from a standpoint of voting on, I would lean into experts in that area, do my homework and research to make a quality decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney.
So I agree with Latiria there. I don't know a ton about it, but I do know that plots do come up for sale from the city. And I know that we have a vacant lot on the corner of Parkway and Jefferson, and the city has reached out to us about turning it into a community garden. Now, instead of taking ours, they want a couple houses or plots down on Jefferson, and they turn that into a community garden space. Believe that we should take more of those empty spaces and leave them for the community to have more gardens and more meeting places like there is on Ida and Ida and Frederick Street. They have their own little like space, it's like a green space, a small, small park you could call it. It's got like a little bench just for people to come and meet and hang out together. And I know that neighborhood associations are the ones that put those together, but making that space available to them would be our step in that process.
Okay, thank you. Jake.
Thank you. One of the ways that we can help with blighted vacant land in the city is to offer new homeowners, rental property owners incentives, credits to convert duplexes and apartments into single family homes. Like somebody said, the more single family, family homes in the neighborhood, the more pride of ownership in that community. It's been proven less crime in areas that are all homeownership areas. The city from time to time does buy properties that are blighted and convert them into gardens temporarily or sells the land off to developers or partnerships with Habitat for Humanity to allow somebody to put in the hard work and the application to have homeownership and add to the community as a homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill.
Thank you. It, it, it's tough. We've, we've got a lot of vacant land. Our biggest weapon and it's, it's, it's one of my favorites because it is so effective is TIF these properties. We need tax dollars and I don't think people understand. Again, I'm being repetitive, but we have half the tax revenue of Appleton are roughly the same, same size. So we need to create taxes, taxable income for us to better our city. And doing that TIF, I know some people disagree with TIFs, it delays the revenue getting back into the school districts and some of the other things. But it is, it's, it's, it's the best bullet we have in the gun to affect that change. So that, that's, that's unfortunately our biggest tool right now. And like Jake said, maybe some tax credits, some other small incentive programs. But, but it is a big issue for Oshkosh. Thank you.
Okay, and Aaron.
Thank you for that. I guess I'm kind of on both. I would like to see us use our economic tools, you know, to encourage development where we can, you know, building single family homes and businesses taking over. But I'd also like to see some more green space being built where we can, you know, where it makes sense. Where there's areas that people obviously don't want to buy or aren't appealing to buildings. Green space is a great place to attract people, you know, young people, make the communities prettier. I think we just need to look, you know, this is kind of like an individual case by case. We need to look at each vacant lot and decide, you know, what is the best use, who's interested in it and go from there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nathaniel, back to you for a question, please.
Certainly, one of the things that, that last year showed us was that people are, people are now, especially during the pandemic, getting outside and, and doing some, doing some fun activities outside and those types of things. Not so much perhaps during the winter. But still, still a lot of things to do in terms of recreation. What are your thoughts on how the city can promote recreational opportunities in the area?
Okay, and let's go to Aaron first for that question.
You know, I think we're, you know, there's only so much we can do before it doesn't, you know, before it's just not an efficient tool. I think we can, one thing specifically that, you know, the city council could do is, you know, do like designate a month as or a week as recreational day or, you know, green space day. Just, you know, little symbolic things like that can really encourage people to go out, encouraging people to host more events at these large spaces. Obviously, it's going to be a little interesting because we have no idea how things are going to look once the weather gets warmer, whether, you know, COVID is going to get worse or better. I'm hoping it will get better. But we can still encourage people to go out and be safe in their own spaces, you know, without risking their health or others. So I guess from a, from a council, from an elected official perspective, it's about encouraging people to go out and use the spaces that we do have by, you know, doing symbolic proclamations or by encouraging events or just spreading the news. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill.
Thank you. That's Nathan, thank you. That's, that's an amazing question. We have a great partnership with, with CVB. Amy Albright over there does a dynamic job. Unfortunately, all of the revenues comes from hotel beds, you know, heads in beds. And so the best thing we could probably do is prop up the CVB a little bit, find some additional funding for them because they've, they've got no revenue coming in off the bed taxes or hotel taxes and things like that. So short term, we need to prop up the CVB. They do an amazing job of marketing and promoting this community and, and that's the quickest and easiest way to do it. And they're, they're the best avenue for that.
Thank you. Courtney.
So I've said it multiple times, I'm going to say it again. Volunteer opportunities to get people more involved in helping clean up our areas or getting things done. When people are invited out, it makes them feel included. It makes them feel like they're wanted in their community. And it helps us in general. Like I said, UW Oshkosh does a cleanup Oshkosh. And I know that they focus on different sections in the community. I know that they're mostly around UW Oshkosh. But we can piggyback on that and do something close to that with the surrounding parks. Whether it be talking to the neighborhood community groups or just putting it out for everyone in general and having you know, commercials or something saying like, we're going to have it this day in the spring, one time in the summer and one time in the fall. But getting Oshkosh cleaned up, making it look nice and that's what makes people want to get out and be active in our parks and our communities. I know that when I go to Menominee Park, I bring a bag so I can pick up other people's trash. And I know that a lot of other people feel the same way and are willing to do the same, just need that push. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, JK, let's go to Jake.
Thank you. I'm going to say that Oshkosh does a great job already. City staff does a great job with recruiting events to come to our, our parks. I think having the Riverwalk, as Bill said, twenty, thirty years ago was just a pipe dream and now people can run, walk their dogs, walk their young family around, taking the views of the, the city. I think we have great family attractions such as Menominee Park. We have one of the best farmer markets outside of like a large Appleton, Madison type city. To my family, COVID has made people kind of rediscover green spaces, being outside. We went on bike rides two, three times a week last summer, something we didn't do before COVID. I think people just need to take advantage of outdoor living and do more stuff outside. It's healthy. It's better than watching TV all summer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Latiria.
I would definitely agree with some of the things that Jake spoke to. I think we have, you know, if we're thinking with a recency mindset, it may be hard to remember, right? But in the past, we've had a lot of great things going on in Oshkosh. And so I, I know we're going to get back to that. I think we have to, to Courtney's point, make sure that things are presentable, cleaned up and safe, right? I know we're already moving in the right direction, cleaning up some of our waterways. I know that's happening in May. And so I think from there to encourage people to come out, it's about promoting. It's about sharing social media, making sure that people know. Because sometimes they find out after the fact and they would have definitely have participated. So I think it's just about using our local newspapers, The Herald, The Northwestern, making sure that, that everyone is aware, however they get their information, news, radio, social media. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael.
Thank you. Um, I don't know what else. There is the ad. Those are all great points. Um, I mean, I guess I'll just say, you know, Oshkosh is the event city and COVID really just, you know, kind of put a pause on it. I, I, I do think we've been going down the right path. We've been great at this. And we have neighborhood associations, the Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is their bread and butter and they've been doing great with it. Um, and I guess I'll just add, you know, Oshkosh has this built up reputation. They have this infrastructure for events and recreation that, you know, we should continue to be promoting. You know, even attracting new activities. I know Country USA, Rock USA, these, these are gone. So there's opportunity there to replace them with something new or something similar. But, um, there's ways we can make a push for that, you know, at, on the council as well, because we need to be cheerleaders of our city. Um, and just in general, the Lake Shore and River Rock, Riverwalk are some of our greatest assets. So we should, you know, be preserving those and, and promoting those. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I believe it's Karen's turn. Is that right?
I believe so.
Okay.
All right. So, um, would you support adding sustainability factors to the checklist for each capital improvement project in the city? And if so, do you think they should be legislatively mandated?
Thank you. Let's start with Courtney this time.
That's an awesome question, Karen. Yes, I really do believe that we should have a checklist for sustainability on new projects and remodels, restorations, everything else. Whether it be legally mandated, um, to an extent, yes. But as of right now, I feel like just having that checklist out there, showing people the possibilities of what they could do and the alternatives that they have. I think that's the number one priority at this time. I know that Oshkosh has a great recycling program. I use it every week. Um, I know a lot of other people do as well. I know that we could, however, for buildings and new projects, push to use more sustainable materials and recyclable materials because a lot of things go, do go to waste. On that note, we could also push for leader systems and building, um, projects and how they do their business. And I know that a checklist showing people that it could be possible and other ways that they're not, you know, familiar with, could be something we would help, be able to help with.
Thank you. Jake.
Thank you. Um, I agree. Sustainability factors should be in plans and mandates. It's about our future. If we have something that's not sustainable, it's going to cost us more long-term. As a city, as a homeowner, having inefficient fairness costs us more, having a more sustainable source of energy. If it's, um, wind or, um, solar, it'll help our, help our environment. Waste is waste and to reduce waste is sometimes investing more money at the beginning to save long-term. So I'm for a sustainable future.
Thank you. Bill.
Thank you. Um, ver- I, I think everybody's for sustainability. Um, there, there's no question that, and that, that, that's our future. And, and you can just see the trends are already going that, that direction. But you got to be careful when you talk about sustainability mandates. You don't want, you don't want them to be punitive where all of a sudden it's, it's not competitive for people to build in Oshkosh or grow Oshkosh. Um, I, I'd like to see more of an incentive approach. Um, again, y- you know, Fond du Lac, our neighboring communities, Appleton, um, we, we have to be consistent, uh, with, with what they're doing there. So we don't deter people from coming to Oshkosh, building here, creating jobs here, things like that. So absolutely, there should be a, a checklist, uh, certainly not a punitive one though. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin.
Thank you for that question. Sustainability is so important. So yes, just like I said in the last forum, we need a sustainability checklist with every capital project that we're doing. Uh, because, you know, as a city that resides on Lake Winnebago, the largest lake in Wisconsin, you know, we have, you know, it's incredibly important that we're protecting it. And I think we have an obligation to make sure that all the information is out there, that we're being transparent with these projects. Um, so not only we know, but you know, the taxpayers, the people who are paying for this project, understand, you know, what they're doing and what the potential ramifications of this project are. I also think the state should make this, you know, the consistent policy over the, you know, in the entire state. So that way we don't have neighboring communities that are doing it, but we're not, you know, it just makes it consistent. Obviously we shouldn't punish. I don't want to see punitive, uh, measures in there. But I think it just because for consistency, consistency sake, uh, is important that the state does something as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Michael.
Thank you. Um, I will start out with, I do think this is something the state should tackle as well. You, you don't want confusion across even neighboring cities. So, but, but yes, I do think there's a framework that's needed legally as well. Uh, maybe even something like a hybrid approach to provide additional incentives for projects that, that take extra steps to be more sustainable. Because like others, others have said, you don't want to over legislate to deter growth. Uh, but I also echo, um, that it, it's, it's too crucial for our future where we can't afford not to do it. Um, the, the long-term costs of inaction are going to be much larger than the cost of, of taking action to be sustainable now. Uh, so I think it's absolutely necessary. Uh, but again, I hope the state leads on this. So the city can, uh, cities can focus on other sustainable initiatives while, um, the area is all on the same page. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Latiria.
Um, I definitely support sustainability. I felt like I supported it in the last forum, but, uh, since then I have learned a whole lot about it and definitely feel like if, uh, we teach others, there may not be a need to necessarily, um, have any form of a legal mandate. If we just really break it down as to what's in it for them for using different sustainable, um, you know, efficient energy, whatever that is, building structures, whatever. I think we have to make sure people understand the impacts. Because I don't know that everyone, right, understands the impacts. Um, not that I'm speaking for everyone, but I certainly did not understand the, the depth, I guess, of some of the things that we do, uh, on earth. And, and so I think we just have to make sure that we're informing, um, that we have the ready, uh, materials for people, whether they're building developers or just residents. How can we locally, right here in Oshkosh, do our individual part, uh, to not impact, uh, the earth as much as we are? How do we lessen our own carbon footprint? Thank you.
Thank you, Latiria. Okay, Nathaniel, um, our last question of the evening will come from you.
I was going to say we're probably getting a little bit low on time, but one, one thing I wanted to ask about was, um, kind of the, the topic about ethics. And, um, so the question being, um, under what circumstances should a council member recuse themselves uh, from a, from a particular discussion or a particular vote? Um, and, and or, um, I, I guess that goes along with, with the, the voting aspect of it. When should they abstain from a vote? And how would you determine, uh, whether or not, um, you individually had a conflict of interest when, uh, discussing or voting on something?
Okay, thank you. Let's start with you, Erin.
Great question. Thank you for that. And I think this is something that we don't often think about. But, you know, I think if the obvious, if there's a financial gain personally to you, if you personally are involved, um, or a family member of the sort, you know, personally, I, I would recuse myself. I would abstain and I would, you know, ask others to do so. Um, you know, I'm trying to think of different instances, you know, when you join local government. Um, I know at least at the county, we got a large ethics book with a whole bunch of stuff attached to it. But, you know, if there's some financial, if there's even like some social, you know, personal gain to that, I think you need to abstain and recuse yourself from that. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Bill.
Thank you. Uh, Nathaniel, great question. It, it, that, that question is so situational. Uh, I, I can see there's, there's 50 different reasons somebody, uh, could want to abstain from a vote. Um, but I, I, I think in the past, what we have done on the council and Jake could probably speak to this as well. Um, I think you lean on your other council members. Uh, certainly Lynn Lawrence and our, our city attorney is, is a great source. Um, you would want to run some things by to see if, if it would be appropriate for you to vote on things. But, uh, again, y- y- obviously the financial one's the first one that jumps up. But again, there's, there's 50 other reasons why you might want to abstain. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Jake.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll jump right into it, right? What Bill mentioned. Soon after I got elected to the council, the first, uh, my first term, Oshkosh Corp came to the city talking about, um, building a new corporate headquarters. I worked for Oshkosh Defense. Um, it's just a very gray area where you got to be careful. The optics of citizens, um, your fellow council members, you got to lean on your council members asking their opinions on these kind of things. I had to recuse myself from voting on the Oshkosh Corp development, even though I think I had a lot to offer in the conversation. I kind of bothered me. I couldn't, but I knew it was the right thing to do. So I recused myself. If I would have voted yes for it, it would have looked like that I was doing something a favor for the company. If I voted no for it, there could have been, um, consequences possibly coming my way. So if it would benefit you financially or personally, like helping a family member get into a business or get a financial incentive, you should recuse yourself and just step aside on that vote. That's the honorable thing to do.
Thank you, Jake. Courtney.
So I agree with the two previous statements. Obviously personal gain, that's unethical. Um, you need to recu- take yourself out of it for that. But also if you don't know enough about a topic, you know, you can ask around and you can, you know, get other people's opinions on something, but if you don't feel like you have a good enough reason to vote on it, you need to take yourself out of it. So you don't make the wrong decision and you should leave it up to the people who really do know what they're talking about in that situation. That being said, you can read up as much as possible. Again, um, do as much due diligence and background research on what you need to, but really knowing what you're talking about, making sure the devil advocate has been played, um, and all sides understood before voting or not voting are the two big issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Latiria.
Um, I would say pretty much what everyone else has said. Anytime it would either negatively or positively impact me, I would think that I should not be voting also. Um, if after I've emailed the people I need to that's presenting something or asked additional questions, if I still didn't feel like I had a good enough handle, um, on whatever the topic or situation was to vote, that would be the other time that I think that it would be best to recuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael.
Thank you. Um, so local government is very local, which, you know, could sound obvious. But, you know, there, like a lot of people said, it's, you potentially could have ethics violations or potential conflicts for, for many things. So it's hard to kind of say a blanket statement. But, um, personally, I would very much err on the side of caution, um, if there's any possible perceived conflicts. Um, you know, the key thing is just being open and transparent with both the public and your fellow council members, like, like people have mentioned to, to either get their opinions or just, just so you're all on the same page. And, and I guess I'll add like a, an example, or if, if we just look at Fond du Lac right now, what's going on with their lakeside park issue? I think I would take that as a, as a great example of what not to do and, and use that as a warning for what could possibly happen here. Um, so, you know, topics of conversation with residents or developers or business people that I would be having as a council member need to be public, you know, you shouldn't be having private meetings. That, that's not acceptable and that gets you into a world of, um, po- possible ethic issues, which is what we're seeing there. So that's something I would actively avoid, um, and make sure that doesn't happen in Oshkosh as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for all those answers tonight. Um, I'm going to give you each 30 seconds at this point, um, to either clarify or rebut something said earlier. If you wish to, um, you can choose to not use your time or you can use all 30 seconds. Yeah, or you can make a statement. And since we've got you there, Michael, let's just start with you.
Awesome. Yeah. So thanks. Thanks, everyone, tonight. Um, I don't have a, a lot to add. I guess I'll say in general, you know, I am a candidate, a person in general that has a lot of ideas and has a lot of things I want to bring to the table, um, if, if I were elected. And, and I know it, I have to be reasonable. Um, so I'm going to bring these ideas. I'm going to push for these ideas I believe in, that the, the community believes in, um, when they communicate that to me. But, um, you know, there's a lot of legalities around these things and I'm aware of that. So these are things I've been diving into, I've been, I've been researching how to best, you know, navigate council issues. So I just want people to be aware that, you know, I have big ideas and, uh, motivations as well.
Thirty seconds isn't very long, is it?
Quick.
Latiria.
Uh, thank you guys for, uh, viewing this recording. Um, for me, being on city council would definitely be an honor and a privilege. Um, I don't think that it will be easy, um, but I am certainly ready to put in the work uh, so that I can be and do things in the best interest of our residents. Um, again, I'm Latiria Garrett and I'm asking for your vote during the spring election on April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney.
I would like to say thank you very much for being given this opportunity to express my view of some things and also tell all the other candidates on being able to talk about these issues and what needs to be done to improve our city. Thank you very much to everyone who's tuning in, everyone who's staying involved in government and everyone wants Oshkosh to be the best that it can. My name's Courtney Hanson and I'd like to help Oshkosh be the best that it can. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake.
Thank you. Like I've said repeatedly, I bring four years' experience in the council already. I have built in relationships with stakeholders, with council members, with city staff, with developers. I'm, I consider myself everyday Oshkosh, which means I think I relate very well with everyday citizens, homeowners, renters, business owners, people from every walk of life. I hear to listen to people, feel like I can learn the most from listening rather than giving ideas, um, from people young and old. That's where I, that's where I come from. So I feel like I can learn the most and help the most by listening.
Thank you, Jake. Bill.
Thank you. Sorry, I had a hard time hitting my mute button there. Um, no, uh, first of all, I want to thank all of yours for, uh, for taking the time to, to watch this. It, it, it's obviously, th- these are the people that care about our community. Uh, I'd certainly like to thank the league again. Uh, our moderators, amazing job tonight. And more importantly, I want to thank all the candidates. Our city would be lucky and blessed to have each and every one of you. I, I, I think this is the best, uh, Zoom meeting I've ever been in in my entire life. So thank you all and thank you all for caring so much about our amazing community. So I appreciate everything.
Okay, Erin.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you to the league, our hosts, to the candidates here and to everyone who's watching this and those who plan to go out and vote. Um, you know, my name's Erin Wojciechowski and I'm, would be honored to serve on the Winnebago, or who, almost got caught up. Oshkosh City Council, you know, those who know me and who've met me know I'm passionate about what I do and about helping others, helping our city. And helping, hoping to bring that passion and that leadership and experience to tackle these tough issues that we're going to face. I'm so great to be here and I look forward to earning your vote in April. So once again, Erin Wojciechowski, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Well, this concludes the forum for the Oshkosh City Council. On Tuesday, April 6th, you may vote for three of these council candidates. Michael Beardsley, Latiria Garrett, Courtney Hanson, Jake Crowsey, Bill Miller and Erin Wojciechowski. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If needed, you may register when you go to vote on election day. Just take a proof of residence with you. Everyone must show a voter ID, a photo voter ID. Go to myvote.wi.gov gov to find information on registration, ballot, acceptable photo IDs and polling places. You can go to votefor11.org to learn more about the candidates. You may also consider voting early or absentee. Please contact the city clerk for more information. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County, I want to thank everyone for participating in this forum. We appreciate Karen Schneider and Nathaniel Shuda, our journalists who serve as panelists for us. We're grateful to Oshkosh Media for continuing to support our forums. And we thank all of you, the candidates, for running for office. Remember, our democracy depends on citizen involvement. Please vote on April 6th. Thank you. Remember, our democracy depends on citizen involvement. Please vote on April 6th. Thank you.